Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 26, 2005. Before we start our regular meeting, I'd like to recognize Mr. Padilla, who has a couple of presentations to give for today's meeting. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, colleagues, members of the public. I have a couple of presentations this morning as members of the council have the very unique privilege and opportunity to do, and that is to say thank you to folks who work hard and help carry out our agendas within their council offices and within the district. And today it saddens me to announce not the retirements, but the promotions and moving ons in their career of two very special people. First, let me call Marta Barone to stand next to me. And I think council members, you probably recognize Marta as somebody who's been in the building for quite a while now. She started in the 7th Council District Office even before I did. She started off as a youth student intern with the city's program here, supported by the Department of Water and Power under then-council member Richard Aragon. When I was elected into the council office, she was still there working hard. And in one of our casual conversations early on into my tenure, I just recognized a lot of spirit, a lot of potential, a really smart young woman there. And so because of the hard work and the quality of work that she did as an intern, was able to talk to her about what was going on in life and offered her a full-time job at the 7th Council District Office. And she's done a tremendous, tremendous job for me, not just performing administrative and clerical duties, but I think the reason most of you will recognize her is when these same certificates are coming around for signature from all the different council offices, Marta did that as well. But whether it was collecting signatures, taking constituent calls, receiving people in and out of the office, I honestly can say I haven't met too many people who are kinder, who are nicer, who are gentler with constituents of all colors, and you know what I mean, than Marta. For the last several months, she's been working out in my district office as a liaison to the local schools in my district and also doing constituent casework at the district level and other special projects. Her husband, she's just been married, what, about a year now?
A little bit longer.
A little bit longer, is in the Marines, and she's being called to be with him as he's stationed in Texas. So Marta, we're going to miss you, and with this certificate, please know that I and the entire city of Los Angeles thank you for all your great work.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody, especially the council member. I mean, I've been here since I was 15, I'm going to be 24 in a couple of days, so it really means a lot to me. My mom and my sister are here. Ms. Hopkins and Ms. Black from the Youth Service Academy, I wouldn't be here also if it wasn't for the Youth Service Academy. And the opportunity that the council member has given to me is just tremendous, and I appreciate everything everyone's done for me, the entire staff, I'm going to miss them. David, he's also leaving, and Felipe, the opportunity they've given me to learn more in the district. Everybody has really done so much for me, and I will carry this on to Texas and be bigger and better, I promise. Take care.
Thank you, Marta. I know we all miss you here as well, so congratulations.
And the second presentation I have this morning in the same category of being proud of individuals who work in our offices for a time and then move on to bigger and better things is to David Gershman. David, would you please come forward? The cheering section in the first two rows here, by the way, is the entire CD7 team. So you may recognize half the people from our city hall staff, but our district offices are here too. David was one of my first hires upon being elected to the city council back in 1999. Didn't start on day one, but it must have been just a few weeks later, I think it was September after my first election, when David joined my office. And I remember when I first interviewed David, he had quite an impressive resume at the time, having worked for Gray Davis in different capacities, including the campaign to be elected governor. At that time, he was working with the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, and I thought to myself, wow, somebody who is young and energetic and driven but already has a tremendous background and experience, that's the kind of person I want on my team. And so he came on board to be my press deputy and communications director, and has since then not only managed our relationships with the media, both the good news and the bad news at times, but mostly good news, but also oversaw some of the mailing programs, our website, and so many other things. David's also become just a very, very good friend because of the natural conversations that take place at that level, talking with your staff about press conferences and message and, you know, what's the next big project going to be. David, really I'm going to miss you as well, but I'm also very happy because he's gotten a tremendous opportunity to go to the private sector, and I'm sure he's going to do very, very well. He's recently gotten engaged, and I know he's looking forward to his wedding later on this year, so there's some great things going on in David's life right now. He's going away, but not too far away, and as I told my staff this morning, I view them all as just extended family. So David, thank you for all your work.
And while the picture is being taken, council member Miss Akowski would like to add a few words.
David, I would just like to say that while you officially had the title of press deputy and communications director with CD7, I for one believe that you were really a press deputy and communications director for the city council. We worked on many, many occasions when you collaborated with a number of council members, a number of council staff, and really, very much like the president, council member Padilla, you also looked at the city's interests as a whole and the council's interests as a whole, and that there are a few people and some council staffs who rise to that, and I just think you're one of them, why not, thank you.
Also, Mr. Labons would like to add some words.
Mr. Padilla, thank you, David, thank you. Marta, congratulations to you and God bless your husband for his service to this country. David lives in my district, so I was proud that I used to hear from him as an extra eyes and ears in the Miracle Mile.
Good morning. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 26, 2005. Before we start our regular meeting, I'd like to recognize Mr. Padilla, who has a couple of presentations to give for today's meeting. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, colleagues, members of the public. I have a couple of presentations this morning as members of the council have the very unique privilege and opportunity to do, and that is to say thank you to folks who work hard and help carry out our agendas within their council offices and within the district. And today, it saddens me to announce not the retirements, but the promotions and moving-ons in their career of two very special people. First, let me call Marta Barone to stand next to me. And I think council members, you probably recognize Marta as somebody who's been in the building for quite a while now. She started in the Seventh Council District Office even before I did. She started off as a youth student intern with the city's program here, supported by the Department of Water and Power under then-councilmember Richard Aragon. When I was elected into the council office, she was still there working hard. And in one of our casual conversations early on into my tenure, I just recognized a lot of spirit, a lot of potential, a really smart, young woman there. And so because of the hard work and the quality of work that she did as an intern, was able to talk to her about what was going on in life and offered her a full-time job at the Seventh Council District Office. And she's done a tremendous, tremendous job for me, not just performing administrative and clerical duties, but I think the reason most of you will recognize her is when these same certificates are coming around for signature from all the different council offices, Marta did that as well. But whether it was collecting signatures, taking constituent calls, receiving people in and out of the office, I honestly can say I haven't met too many people who are kinder, who are nicer, who are gentler with constituents of all colors, and you know what I mean, than Marta. For the last several months, she's been working out in my district office as a liaison to the local schools in my district and also doing constituent casework at the district level and other special projects. Her husband, she's just been married, what, about a year now?
No, it's been longer.
A little bit longer, is in the Marines. And she's being called to go be with him as he's stationed in Texas. So Marta, we're going to miss you. And with this certificate, please know that I and the entire city of Los Angeles thank you for all your great work.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody, especially the council member. I mean, I've been here since I was 15. I'm going to be 24 in a couple of days. So it really means a lot to me. My mom and my sister are here. Ms. Hopkins and Ms. Black from the Youth Service Academy. I wouldn't be here also if it wasn't for the Youth Service Academy. And the opportunity that the council member has given to me is just tremendous, and I appreciate everything everyone's done for me, the entire staff, I'm going to miss them. David, he's also leaving, and Felipe, the opportunity they've given me to learn more in the district. Everybody has really done so much for me. And I will carry this on to Texas and be bigger and better. I promise. Take care.
Thank you, Marta. I know we all miss you here as well. Congratulations.
And the second presentation I have this morning in the same category of being proud of individuals who work in our offices for a time and then move on to bigger and better things is to David Gershwin. David, would you please come forward? The cheering section in the first two rows here, by the way, is the entire CD7 team. So you may recognize half the people from our city hall staff, but our district offices are here, too. David was one of my first hires upon being elected to the city council back in 1999. Didn't start on day one, but it must have been just a few weeks later. I think it was September after my first election when David joined my office. And I remember when I first interviewed David, he had quite an impressive resume at the time, having worked for Gray Davis in different capacities, including the campaign to be elected governor. At that time, he was working with the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. And I thought to myself, wow, somebody who is young and energetic and driven, but already has a tremendous background and experience, that's the kind of person I want on my team. And so he came on board to be my press deputy and communications director and has since then not only managed our relationships with the media, both the good news and the bad news at times, but mostly good news, but also oversaw some of the mailing programs, our website, and so many other things. David's also become just a very, very good friend because of the natural conversations that take place at that level, talking with your staff about press conferences and message and, you know, what's the next big project going to be. David, really, I'm going to miss you as well, but I'm also very happy because he's gotten a tremendous opportunity to go to the private sector, and I'm sure he's going to do very, very well. He's recently gotten engaged, and I know he's looking forward to his wedding later on this year. So there's some great things going on in David's life right now. He's going away, but not too far away. And as I told my staff this morning, I view them all as just extended family. So David, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, David.
And while the picture's being taken, councilmember Miss Sikowski would like to add a few words.
David, I would just like to say that while you officially had the title of press deputy and communications director with CD7, I, for one, believe that you were really a press deputy and communications director for the city council. We worked on many, many occasions when you collaborated with a number of council members, a number of council staff. And really, very much like the president, councilmember Padilla, you also looked at the city's interests as a whole and the council's interests as a whole. And that there are a few people and some council staffs who rise to that, and I just think you're one of them. I want to thank you.
Also, Mr. Labange would like to add some words.
Mr. Padilla, thank you. David, thank you. Marta, congratulations to you and God bless your husband for his service to this country. David lives in my district, so I was proud that I used to hear from him as an extra eyes and ears in the Miracle Mile and giving me input. And I was very proud, too, Alex, as Sidney just said. He was one of the -- I admire staff because Sidney and I and Wendy, all of us were staff at one time, and the work that they do for their boss. And I always try to get David in the hallway to try to get inside Alex Padilla's mind and to get that insight. And he would never give me an itch. He was truly a dedicated, dedicated person. So if I may, Mr. President.
Only if you can name his high school.
I know.
Sidney did live in the Fourth District. And since I'm the councilman of the Fourth District, you got this great proclamation signed by everybody, especially your boss. I wanted to give this extra one because you're a special district of the Fourth. Congratulations on your marriage. And if you don't have it set up, I do marry people.
Fantastic. Keep that in mind.
Thank you. Couple other council members would like to speak as well. Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And I, too, want to stand up as Ms. Sikowski and Mr. Labange stated that, David, we saw you as an extension of the entire city council, and you were always there and available with a great sense of humor and wit, cynicism sometimes, too, which is good. But you are someone that, I think, has been active citywide and in the Jewish community. And lo and behold, one night I saw you at a Jewish holiday dinner sitting across from me, which was fabulous. And so I think we have enjoyed having you be part of the city family. And you're not going far. We know we will get to see you often, but you are someone of high caliber and a great reputation. So you served Alex very, very well. And maybe someday we'll get you to come back. But thank you very much for all your efforts.
Next, Mr. Zine would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. David, you've always had the friendly smile, the willingness to get things done. And I didn't know you were the media director because I thought you were the director of all operations because you've always been there to help with anything and everything. And I wish you well in your new endeavor. I heard where you're going. It's a wonderful place. I know you'll make a lot of money, make a lot of wonderful contacts. And working with Alex, I'm sure, was a pleasure. But all of us appreciate all the work you did for all of us because it helped us disseminate the message to the people of Los Angeles. So congratulations and good luck in your new career.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And Mr. Gershwin, David, let me just add as well my thanks. You're too young to be a city hall institution, but you truly are a city hall institution. And when -- I didn't originally have a communications deputy, but when I brought Josh up to be communications deputy, I said, just do what Dave Gershwin does. And he really set the standard. And I'm looking forward to -- I know you can't take -- you would take your first meeting, of course, with Mr. Padilla, but I want to reiterate, since you can't meet with him for a year, that I'm very happy to be taking the first meeting with you. So you just let me know when. We'll welcome you back to city hall. Okay? And Mr. Weiss would like to add something as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just join everybody in wishing you the very best. And it's been great getting to know you. It's been great to become your friend. And as you well know, and I won't belabor the point in here, I truly am getting the best end of the bargain as you leave city hall right now. More on that later. But congratulations, David, and thanks.
Thank you. Well, it's been a pleasure working here at city hall and serving Councilman Padilla and seeing you evolve into, you know, serving the city as the council president, all the wonderful things that you've done, not only for your district, but for the city. And over that course of time, we've seen these incredible things happen in your district, whether it's the children's museum or revitalization of the northeast San Fernando Valley, construction of new libraries, you know, the opening of these incredible facilities at Hanson BAM, groundbreaking housing projects and so more. I mean, I could be here all day. And I always tell you to keep the message brief. I'm going to try to do the same thing. But for someone who used to always get in trouble for talking too much in class, it was pretty neat to have the opportunity to talk too much in class for a living. And doing that for the city of Los Angeles, a city that I've been the resident of since I was 18 years old, it's been an incredible experience. And I'm going to miss all of the Council District Seven staff and the councilmen, members of the city family, all of you in this room and all of you watching today. It's been an honor and a privilege every step of the way. So as you said, I'm not going far away. I'll be around, but I just, I won't be part of the city family. But it's been a great experience. And I want to thank you for the opportunity for giving me that experience, Councilman. Thank you.
Once part of the city family, always part of the extended city family. And I, you know, David was mentioning some of the things in the district that we're very proud of. And I think just to follow up on what Councilman Sikowski said, everything this council did as a team, whether it's been through the budgets, through the airport plans, through 9/11, through hiring, the hiring of Chief Bratton, and, you know, on and on and on, David's been there right behind me as a very critical part of it. So David, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Lando, Sikowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 12 members present in accord, Mr. President.
Mr. Gershwin, would you do us the honor of the salute to the flag before you leave this morning? If I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, next order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Weiss seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Smith moves and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment. I'd like to invite Charles Griffin forward, please, to the podium to give public comment at this time.
Good morning. My name is Charles Griffin. I come from Newport Beach, although I'm a native son of Los Angeles. In today's LA Times, there is an article on the front page of the business section with the journalist interviewing Ronald Sugar of Northrop. And I want to speak with regarding to that because I'm a retiree of Northrop and helped, spent 13 years developing the B-2 stealth bomber. But that bomber will not work well without a refueling tanker. And I also was involved in developing the KC-10 tanker at Long Beach with Douglas. However, that was 20 years ago. And now it needs to be replaced. And it's a $23 billion contract. And through the inappropriate behavior by the procuring officer for the Air Force and the executive of Boeing, that contract must be let to someone else. And Airbus, a Dutch corporation, is bidding on it and is offering to build a plant in the United States to build that, build those tankers. And I want you to take, be proactive in bringing that contract to California, to Southern California and Los Angeles. And it would be appropriate for Northrop to become the prime contractor, whether they get their airframe from France or from, or subcontractors they did on the B-2 with Boeing. It's appropriate that that contract come to Los Angeles and to our Los Angeles company, Northrop, and have it built at a new airport at El Toro. Do you hear me? El Toro is the appropriate place for that airport, that airplane to be built and thus be a joint-use airport, both Air Force and for our Air Force Reserve, our National Guard, our Air Force National Guard, and taking the growth of the Los Angeles community for an international airport there. And that's why I came here this morning, to not give up the fight, even though that property, the auction of that property was closed last week, and the highest bidder was the largest home builder in the country. I think it's appropriate that you continue your efforts to procure that airport for the general good. That auction merely sets the price at which the eminent domain would have to pay to procure that airport. Thank you very much, people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your efforts in procuring that airport.
Absolutely. We appreciate your comments very much today. That closes public comment for today. Go to the next order of business, please.
First item on the agenda, Mr. President, is item notice for public hearing. It's a protest hearing and ordinance regarding the Wilmington Parking and Business Improvement District.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing, close the public hearing on that. And if we can, there are a couple of ordinances that we have, we can take together?
Just one ordinance on that side.
Let's open, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Han, did you want to speak on this one?
I do. Was there a public comment on this?
Not on this one.
Oh, no, I wanted to speak on it.
Okay, Ms. Han.
Colleagues, this is the renewal of the Wilmington Business Improvement District. It's up for renewal today. It's been in existence only four years, and it is a great bid in the city of Los Angeles. And it's proved to be a really valuable, workable, productive bid. They have improved downtown Wilmington. They've, it's safer, it's cleaner. More people are shopping in downtown Wilmington, which is really the best thing you can say about a bid is if they're able to do those three things, keep it clean, keep it safe, and encourage shoppers. I've been told that they've got an aggressive program for their next few years. They want to improve the lighting in downtown Wilmington, and they want to do a sidewalk improvement project. So I just wanted to get everybody's support that we should absolutely renew this bid. It's one of those that has really involved the private sector, the community, law enforcement to really improve downtown Wilmington. So I ask for your support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Seeing no other speakers, can we please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
13 ayes.
That is approved. We'll go forthwith on that. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 2 through 22. And I believe there is a motion from Ms. Han on item number 2.
Okay. 2 is the commissioner appointment? Is that correct?
Actually, I think we have a committee report from Commerce and Energy Committee. This was in this morning, and it was to receive and file this commission recommendation. There's been issues raised about the ability to serve. And so the recommendation.
Great. We'll move that. Any specials, colleagues, these items? Yes, Ms. Gruel?
I want to ask 19 to be moved to go forthwith.
Okay, once we have 19. Item 20?
Forthwith.
Oh, you want forthwith on the, okay. We'll take forthwith shortly. 19 and 20, we'll make a note of it. Okay, let's just open the roll first on number 2, if we can. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That motion is approved. Let's take the next batch.
Then that would be, before council, would be items 3 through 22.
Okay, 3 through 22. We'll call 22 special because we have a public speaker card. Any specials, colleagues? Just specials on those? Okay. If not, let's open the roll on the balance. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those items are approved.
And I believe there was a request on 19 and 20.
19 and 20, we will do forthwith. Absolutely. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 23 through 31. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a commissioner on item number 23.
Okay, let's put 23 aside as a special, then. And any other specials? Mr. Reyes?
24, please.
24? Okay. Other specials, colleagues? Seeing none other, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those items are approved. Okay. Is that the last batch?
The next item would be the closed session, which is 32. Do you wish to hold that one on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk as well.
And then going back to the items called special, I believe 22 was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, this time, Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. If you'd like to step forward on item number 22. We'll take your public comment right now. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins from District Number 9. On number 22, I would say yes to our Budget and Finance Committee. If we do not deal with giving out checks, voucher, certificates to certain schools, shelters, buildings to share abroad, let's allow them to come to the building, the person themselves, to receive all they have in need of because of all monies and gifts that are not distributed to one, to the one in need, but back into the hands of the worker, whether they are able or disabled. So let's distribute all trades and not checks. We're very concerned about who is cashing the checks, whether it's the judge, the principal, or whether it is the attorney. So we want to distribute to all schools whatever they have in need of with the trade, with the equipment, not a check to the school that is now being shared abroad. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. We appreciate your testimony. That closes public comment for item 22. If we can open the roll on this. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That item is approved as well. Okay. If we can reconsider item 2, colleagues, I will move that. We need to actually formally disapprove it is the most, the action that has to be taken. Ms. Sikowski, if you'll second that?
Well, yes, I will second that. Let me move for reconsideration then so we can move appropriately for the city attorney's advice.
Let's open the roll on reconsideration, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is before us. And if we can move to formally disapprove that, please open the roll. That's, sorry? I'm sorry, Mr. Parks can't quite hear you.
I just want to clarify. You said disapprove. What are we saying, a yes disapproves or a no?
A yes will disapprove, yes. That makes it easier. So open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We have affirmatively disapproved it. All right, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 23. And that was called special, that is confirmation of Mr. John Ornells to the CRA board.
Commissioner, if you'd like to come forward at this time. We welcome you in committee, and it's good to have you back here. We have already one council member who'd like to speak. But just before that, I'd like to afford you the opportunity to address the council on the next few years before the CRA board. You've done an extraordinary job as a member of that board. And so if you'd like to share anything with the council before we hear from any council member questions, go ahead.
All right, then. Thank you, Mr. President and the council. This is certainly a pleasure for me to be before you for the reappointment. I've served on the commission for the last couple of years. And certainly, from the standpoint of the challenges and changes that are facing the agency, it's been a very satisfying two years that I've been on the commission. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us, including challenges with our resources and staffing, et cetera. Certainly, from the standpoint of the agency's focus and strategic plan, we're looking at refocusing our efforts on some of the more successful things we do. And of course, recently with the controller's audit and being a city manager, I'm kind of used to audits, but never used to, you never can get used to 93 recommendations. But certainly, from the standpoint of reviewing audits and looking at that audit and facing the challenge of addressing the audit, we have a staff and commission that is committed to working with the controller's office and the council to make sure that all the recommendations are addressed.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Labange will be our first speaker, and then Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Zine. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Garcetti and I, Mr. Garcetti primarily, but I have Hollywood area. There's been a lot of success in Hollywood, but there is more that needs to be done. What is your impression of Hollywood? And then I'm going to follow up with a question about North Hollywood redevelopment.
Well, certainly from Hollywood's standpoint, in fact, just recently, probably two weeks ago, I was meeting with a group in Chinatown, and we were speaking of the successes of the agency. the agency and one of the project areas that came up was Hollywood as well as downtown. And the issue was related to the resources committed to Hollywood and to downtown and the resources committed to Chinatown. And there were, the discussion really was focused on comparing the kinds of things that are going on. I believe that certainly from the standpoint of Hollywood, it's, has momentum, there is commitment on the part of the agency in terms of the technical assistance and the resources committed to continue the momentum and nurture and embrace what is going on there. Certainly, the market would dictate a lot of what happens there, but that's going to happen with all the thirty-two project areas that we have. So, but Hollywood will continue to succeed and move forward and the resources are committed to Hollywood.
And you support that?
I totally support that.
Great. Now, your impressions of North Hollywood and the agency's work there?
Well, I am also very familiar with North Hollywood because I've, I worked in, as the redevelopment director at one time for ten years with the city of Burbank. And I worked with Mr. Bud Overham, the CEO of the agency. And we witnessed the differences in development and the quality of services that were being provided between Burbank and North Hollywood. With the changes that are going on and certainly from the staffing, the changes in philosophy of what we want to see in North Hollywood and the transportation issues and the linkage of the transportation with the development that's going on, the need for housing, et cetera. I think you'll see probably North Hollywood as coming, as the up and coming Burbank in terms of development that's going to happen there.
Well, I think the one point I want to stress is the combination between transit and housing. It's the orange line, busway, which will be open later this year. The metro rail subway, which exists right now, provides an access for activity and mobility. So that type of housing that's there is necessary. I just want to thank you for your efforts throughout the city of Los Angeles. It's very important with the redevelopment agency, but I appreciate your support of Hollywood and North Hollywood and all the other districts as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine. Actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Zine, can I defer Mr. Padilla since Mr. Ornelas lives in his district? Mr. Padilla, would you like to go next?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I just want to stand and say, I've been very proud of John as a constituent of mine and certainly as a commissioner. His background, which he's shared with this council before in city management and redevelopment specifically, probably provide the best specific toolkit that you can offer to this particular commission. He's been very helpful to me in some of the projects we have going on in my district and I believe he's also been very helpful and not shy about being hands-on with some of the other very important projects in different parts of the city. So, John, the city really, really appreciates what you bring to the table and thanks you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Zine?
Chair. Mr. Ornelas, we met last week, I believe, and spoke?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Someone told me after we spoke that there was a concern about some of the CRA areas, and I have a CRA area in my district along Reseda, Canoga Park area, that there was an issue about taking money from some of the areas of the city which are CRA designated and transferring to other areas. And I'm concerned about that because I have a great need in the Canoga Park, Reseda area to upgrade that area. We have a lot of areas that need that attention and we're using the CRA dollars. We've done very well in Canoga Park. Now moving east along Sherman Way Corridor into, from Canoga Park into Reseda. And I'm concerned that those dollars stay in those communities. And I have heard that there was a move at the CRA, at the board, to ship some of those dollars. Can you please discuss that issue?
Yeah, and I think the commission most definitely recognizes the legal limitations and the transfer of dollars, tax increment dollars from one project area to another. I think the discussion has always been relative to the areas that over the years have not done as well as other areas. And certainly finding the resources, including the staff resources, to initiate and be more creative in deficit project areas is an issue that the agency has discussed. But the agency has never, and when I say agency, I'm talking about the commissioners, have never discussed the issue of transference of resources at the expense of other project areas that are doing well. And those areas that are doing well, that have the resources, are doing well for a reason.
Right.
And so the idea is that we need to be more creative and we have to take a little more initiative to provide the resources to the deficit project areas, whether it's East LA, South Los Angeles, the East Valley, the West Valley, wherever we initiate projects that we provide the proper resources to make those projects happen.
Okay, now I understand that, but I want to make sure that in the area that still needs a lot of attention, the Reseda area, which we're in the process now, that we don't lose those dollars and other state regulations and mandates regarding that. And as far as the personnel, Leslie Lambert and her crew do a great job. I know Bud's taken over the CRA administration, done a great job with that. And I look at what he did in Burbank when Lockheed left and they thought Burbank may become a ghost town and obviously not the case. It's done extremely well. And we're looking for that same type of environment here, at least in the San Fernando Valley. I'm sure my colleagues share that concern. Janice Hawn down in her area where I know they want to do refurbishing at the port, which is going to be a nice tourist attraction as they have in the marina, where people go to the marina because it's a nice, wonderful place to visit. But there's so many areas that need that attention that have been neglected for so many years. And once we finally get the CRA in, we start seeing the advancement, we see the positive image and the investment in that community, then we start seeing the business come back, the jobs come back and they start to thrive. And then if we divert that, then oftentimes what happens is it starts falling down the ladder, which I just want to make sure, I went on record to say, whatever we're doing in Reseda, Canoga Park, that third district is doing extremely well. Keep on that same track. Once we finish the project, and I think we have a few years left on that CRA funding, then we can maybe come and identify some others, because there's definitely a need throughout this entire city where those dollars need to be invested to improve the quality of life for all folks. But that valley keeps complaining, they've been shortchanged, shortchanged, shortchanged for so many years and we want to make sure we can complete the projects that we currently have on the map. So I appreciate your support in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas to be followed by Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Ornelas. I think it's only appropriate that when those of us from the valley talk about resources from the valley and talk about the lack of resources and the amount of inclusion that this city should have with the valley constituents, with all due respect, I mean disrespectfully, I consider you a resource, John. You have a wealth of information, your experience and your latitude of knowledge is tremendous. And I just wanted to thank you for giving up of your time to be on our CRA board and I'm glad to have you. But with that, how do you feel about the opportunities that CRA might have in addressing issues in the San Fernando Valley?
Well, we, certainly from the standpoint of, I'm obviously the one member of the commission that is, that resides in the San Fernando Valley, so certainly that's of interest to me. The project areas that we do have, and we have a couple of earthquake recovery areas that aren't similar to a normal redevelopment project area where you generate tax increment and you're able to do the types of things that a redevelopment agency can as a project area in terms of a conduit for financing. But there are a lot of things we can do creatively relative to using all the other agencies, whether it's the Housing Department, the Community Development Department, Section 108 loans, HUD loans, CDBG funds, those kinds of resources, to combine those resources with agency dollars to leverage, to make things happen in the San Fernando Valley. There are areas in the San Fernando Valley that are prime for development and I'm sure you're aware of some of the development sites. Price-Fister is a tremendous site for development and it's a, it could be viewed as a signature project, a catalyst-type project that will change the face of that area. There are areas in Panorama City, the old Kmart site, the US Bank site. There are buildings and facilities there that can be redeveloped that will make a signature in those parts of the valley and create and stimulate development, stimulate future development.
Thank you for that explanation. A lot of people don't understand that the CRA is in fact a positive endeavor and it's something that is very inclusive and an effort that actually does include community input, contrary to what some people might think. And you do have open and transparent meetings and that's what part of your responsibility as a board member. I just wanted to point that out for the Angelinos who might not understand what your responsibilities are as a board member. In addition to that, I just wanted to, once again, thank you for your service, John, and I want to thank the mayor for appointing you and also for giving you the opportunity to continue to serve the city. I wholeheartedly support your appointment and once again appreciate your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. John, a lot of people have asked some of the questions I was going to ask, but I also wanted to stand up and say thank you for your dedication. You were at committee last week in the committee that Mr. Garcetti and I co-chaired to talk about a specific audit and reorganization and things that the commission is going to do. And I, I think, colleagues, it's important to note that four of the commissioners were there that day to say we're serious about organization, we're serious about this department and commitment. And so I look forward to the implementation of many of those recommendations, but I think it demonstrated that you all are looking at how the department is run and the priorities of housing and economic development in the city of Los Angeles and throughout the city. Obviously, many of us have projects in our district and appreciate the work that the CRA is doing and will, will be coming back to you to continue that. But thank you for your service and look forward to another term.
Thank you.
Other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? On Mr. Ornelas's appointment? If not, then Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for serving the city. Let's send this item forthwith, please, Madam Clerk, and proceed to the next item.
Next item is item number twenty-four and that was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I called this special only in that I wanted to bring a focus to the changes that are going on in the Central City West Plan, specific plan, one of the few that's in my district. What we're trying to do is we're reducing the trip fees. At one time, we were charging up to eighteen hundred dollars around in that range for a trip fee. Every time someone would come in and try to develop in this part of the district, there's an incredible amount of fees that came with those scenarios. Well, since the late eighties, the real estate kind of fell out to the bottom. The development plans that were being then considered have gone away. Today, you have a high number of schools being built, large number of schools, I believe, three high schools, primary centers. We have police stations. We have civil service-type facilities, public service education, and now we have housing coming in like gangbusters. It's not the big commercial towers. As such, we are moving to reduce the trip fee down to six thousand nine hundred ninety-five. We're making all the technical changes along the specific plan, again, to create a friendly environment for those who want to come and invest on, just on the other side of the Harbor Freeway. It's a tremendous location. Now we have a fifteen-acre park that's emerging along with Belmont. We've closed that ugly chapter. It's going to get built along with the other high schools. So again, this is another effort in which we're trying, we're trying to show that we're business-friendly, we're trying to be balanced, the same time continue to focus on the infrastructure for the Central City West area. So I appreciate your support on this. It's long overdue and I think we'll send a solid message about being business-friendly and trying to expert developments that make sense for the city and for the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members of the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. There is a special one motion that has been introduced by Councilmember Reyes and I believe the maker of the motion will be speaking to the findings.
Mr. Reyes on the findings.
Thank you, Council President. On the special one, it's an effort on my part and supported by the chair of the personnel to try to keep a certain balance within the planning department, knowing that it's in a state of transition. I just had a discussion with Councilman Miskowski and she brought up a real good point in that between now and the time we essentially appoint a new planning director, we have certain folks that are retiring. And when you look at the last further move, what I was asking for is to suspend or otherwise hold in advance any internal staffing movements, including promotions, demotions, and reassignments until a new director of planning has been appointed. What I'd like to do, given her observation, Councilman Miskowski's observation is that let the planning director know that I'm very concerned about the movement of personnel at this time, that I need to have through committee and I'll change this to Rule sixteen, to have them identify all positions that are currently on the list that reflect who is being promoted. At the same time, have on the list who is going to be transitioning out either because of retirement or movement to other departments. In other words, we should be very careful how we're making these changes. There is a level of promotability that the planning department director has without checking either with the committee or with council. And that's what I was trying to get to, trying to freeze those positions.
Again, because he's transitioning out, the impact of these changes can have a long-term
effect. I think we should be balanced as to how we're dealing with the personnel crisis happening in the planning department, given the amount of work that's been piled upon them. So as a result, I'm going to go ahead and move this as a Rule sixteen, but I want to submit it as such, but I want to factor in the, and I want to put in the language, a further move that the planning department be requested to report to the planning committee when dealing with any staff, staffing movements, including promotions, demotions, or reassignments, and keep it at that level. Have a second on that? Okay.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Reyes. Relative to the findings, which the city attorney would like us to discuss, I had shared with Mr. Reyes that I did not think I could make the findings because I don't think that there's been something unusual that has recently happened, but that if he changes this to Rule sixteen, clearly the planning department is on a, at a very, very important place right now. There are a number of senior members who are retiring, including a number of zoning administrators, and were we to freeze in place and not replace them, what we hear mostly from developers is how long it takes to process things through the planning department. And so if we froze those positions, we would just put the burden on those who are remaining. On the other hand, to look at sort of a little bit longer term, but within a short-term future, how many of the vacancies may be occurring, what the lists are in terms of how personnel presents them, how the planning department would go about choosing people from the list for the positions. These are all civil service, they're all test-related, and particularly, I think we'd want to look at the ones which may not be, the exempt positions. But I think having that reported back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee with personnel and perhaps some more discussions with both the general manager of planning, the general manager of personnel, and the chairman of PLUM would help set those protocols and information available so that everyone would know what we're proceeding on. Unfortunately, we have seen in the city sometimes, as we do a search for a new director or general manager, it can be sometimes as long as a year or longer. And as I say, the planning department could not afford carrying vacant positions and be frozen at that time. So I appreciate the, that this can be changed to Rule sixteen and we can discuss it further in committee and then come back to council.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Miskowski, I'd like to also request that any internal staffing movements, including promotions, demotions, or reassignments until a new director of planning has been appointed, that that information be also sent to personnel and PLUM before any of those movements are made.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, that's going to be included in, are you going to resubmit that as a Rule sixteen and then all your, these requests will be included in that?
Right, I'll submit that today as a Rule sixteen.
Okay.
Okay. So the special one has been withdrawn and it'll be resubmitted as a Rule sixteen.
I think special one can just be stamped as Rule sixteen, which has that in there and then come back to committee and council.
Okay.
Okay, just stamp that then for Rule sixteen.
To your staff.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused February twenty-third and twenty-fifth for personal business. A motion is required on the twenty-third.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Parks is excused.
Mr. Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, March eighth, to arrive at eleven a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Villarreal request to be excused Friday, excuse me, February twenty-fifth and March first, second, eighth, and ninth for personal business. A motion is required on the twenty-fifth.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Villarreal is excused.
And Ms. Councilmember Ludlow requests to be excused from today's meeting Tuesday, February twenty-second for- February 22nd for personal business, and that meets council policy.
Ms. Ludlow is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Just one brief announcement before going into closed session. I know there's a number of members from Public Works who are here. We will be doing a special adjourning motion immediately after closed session. We don't expect closed session to take very long today. And if there's nothing further before going into closed session, then the council will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to California law. Sergeants, would you please clear the chambers? Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
The item before council is item number 32, and that would be the city attorney and CIO recommendations relative to retention of conflict counsel in case entitled Estate of Wallace versus City of Los Angeles.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Okay. Go ahead. Ten ayes, one no.
Okay, that is approved. Let's send that item forthwith, please. Next item, please.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you very much. Colleagues, this is the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Announcements, colleagues? Ms. Garcetti for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I would just reiterate, I know a lot of people are watching this and dealing with rain situations. We had a house that slipped 50 feet yesterday on Angeles Avenue in Echo Park-Silverlake area, a number of damages. That if there's anything that is life-threatening, strict emergency, call 911. But 311 is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week right now for some of the Public Works and transportation needs that we have, some of power outages, things like that, that we should ask all residents to be calling 311. Looks like we have one more day of rain to get through. And we want to thank, I know we'll be speaking about the roles of some of the city employees, but want to thank all the city employees who are working especially hard right now to keep the city safe.
Absolutely. A lot of Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, Building and Safety, other department staff, Department of Transportation definitely out there working overtime. Colleagues, also wanted to, on behalf of the city clerk, make the following announcement. Today, February 22nd is the last day to register to vote and participate in the March 8th election. Registration forms must be postmarked by midnight tonight. So everybody watching at home, or everybody listening on council phone, if you or anybody you know still hasn't registered or reregistered to do so on time for the March 8th election, today is the deadline. You can visit any city library, any post office, the DM, via a number of other governmental buildings and offices for voter registration forms. And do we have any other announcements? If there are no further announcements, would you all please rise for adjourning motions?
Let me recognize Councilman Brocarras first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Rory M. Shaw, but also I'd like to ask permission of the council if we could have some of his colleagues and friends say a few words if they would like, if that's appropriate, Mr. President. Rory M. Shaw was a civil engineering associate for, with the Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering, and he joined the city in 1991. Rory died late Sunday night while responding during the storm emergency on the massive sinkhole on Tahunga Avenue in Sun Valley. Rory Shaw comes from a rural portion of the northern part of the state of Michigan. Rory pursued degrees in mathematics, chemical engineering, and civil engineering, and completed military services as a lieutenant in the U.S. Navy, where his duties included nuclear power and classified assignments. He is remembered as a dedicated city employee, responding to emergencies at all hours, always on the scene at the most difficult problems. His attitude was always can-do. As a matter of fact, in 2002, he was awarded the department's GOBE Award for going above and beyond the call of duty. I had the pleasure and the honor to meet Rory. I had met him before, but on that fatal night, Sunday night, the night of his passing, I met him in the stormy rain, and he stuck out his hand, and we shook hands, and we commenced a speak for a few seconds, and he immediately said, "Excuse me, but I have to get back to work." And I immediately told him, "By all means, I'm not here to get in his way." But the tone in his voice and the way he moved around Commissioner Yolanda Fuentes were only about 30 paces behind him when the incident occurred and we lost him. And I could tell right away what kind of person he was, especially when Commissioner Fuentes told me that previously, 24 hours earlier, he looked at her and told her that he was determined to save the street. And he went on to explain the things that he was concerned about and why he was going to do it. He was a man who was determined, dedicated, committed, and the kind of individual that I think we all aspire to be. He had his job, and I say this respectfully. There are people you meet in your life that they do everything 110%, and the one thing they never want is for someone to feel sorry for them or to feel regret. And I think that's how we feel about Rory. We're proud to have met him. Some people have been proud to know him all of his life. He's survived by many, many friends, people he's touched in his life, and also by his mother Shirley and his sister Leslie. And hopefully tomorrow, we'll be able to notify all of you of the services that they're arranging at this moment. So at this time, Mr. President, is it appropriate that we allow some of his friends to speak?
Sure. Commission President Valerie Shaw.
Counsel and community, we're saddened here today to express the loss of Rory Shaw. And I did not see Rory die, but I did see Rory live. And he was an extraordinary person. He exemplified the beauty and the strength and the character of a city employee. In this very turbulent world of City Hall, he was someone who you could rely on. He was someone that would support you, and he was someone that all of us look to for advice and for strength. We'll more than miss him. I simply don't know what we'll do without him.
As a commissioner who probably worked the closest with Rory, I can only say that his honesty is something that I think is an example that we should all try to live by. There were no politics for Rory. It was simply the truth. It was a bad situation. It was something that could be fixed. Whatever it was, you heard it. He told it exactly as it was. When he started coming to me for approvals on these emergency repairs, he'd say to me, "Well, you know, Commissioner, you should now ask me," and then he'd tell me what I should ask him. Or he'd say, "Commissioner, I think you should suggest that I do," and then he would tell me what I should suggest that he do. And I just always knew that whatever he said, it was the truth, it was the right decision. And knowing that and knowing Rory really and truly not only made my job a pleasure, but gave me confidence in what I was doing, and that it would be something that no one would be able to question because he told me to do it. So it's very, it's a huge loss for the department. It's a huge loss for the Bureau of Engineering, and personally, I will miss a really wonderful and trusted friend.
Councilmembers, I'm Brad Smith, and the chief deputy city engineer. City engineer isn't here today because he is with the family. The family this morning wanted to see the site. So the city engineer is there with the family at the moment. They wanted to see the site because this is how Rory was. His mom would come and visit with him in Michigan, or from Michigan, and would stay the winters. And Rory would get these emergency calls as the chief of emergency sewer repair for the Bureau. He'd get these calls at all nights, and so what else to do but take your mom with you? So his mom knew firsthand, even though she lived 2,000 miles away, what this city meant to him and what his service to the public meant. And she wanted to see the spot. He was the best. Those are easy words to say. I think if you don't personally know that, your staff does, because I think he did emergency repairs in all of your districts on numerous occasions. He led that effort. He technically did it as well as it could possibly have been done. He was respected not only by all of us in the city, he was respected by the contractors that worked with him in the field, side by side. Contractor was there Sunday night. Contractor was there all night long. That's the kind of person he was, not just inside the city family, but with everybody. Just the best. And I just, the only thing I'll leave it with is, on top of all of this technical stuff, I don't know that I ever had a conversation with him, no matter how tough it was, where there wasn't laughter and a smile. I'll remember that, too. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Ms. Mr. Sikowski.
Oh, well, I think as Brad indicated, there isn't a council member here whose staff, if we don't know him personally, and I did, but his staff immediately, and I've got my staff from my West LA Pacific Palisades office, from the Westchester community, everyone said, and just like Tony said, I'm not surprised that he met him in an emergency because that's where he was. If there was something falling down, if there was some pipes stopped up, if there was something that was going to slide, he was there to prevent it. And I particularly appreciated hearing that he was there to say, "I can save the street," because he always knew what could be done or how to do it, the 24 hours, the getting the pumps out there, knowing where the pumps were and having them put in the certain places in the city, because when our, some of our canyon roads were falling down, if all the pumps were on one side of the hill and not the other, he knew about it. I mean, he knew where extra sewer pump, some pumps were from the DWP, that if ours were extended, he knew where to go and borrow them from DWP. He really, really was a special person, and probably a whole lot of the city and its roads and its sewers are working today, having survived very, very difficult emergencies in the past, because he was there to fix them. And so it really is a shock that someone like that. And I think it just calls to mind not only the unique individual here, but as we have seen the rains fall and have seen the tragedies befall our city and our region, to know that our employees have been out there, are out there, and will be out there again and again, over the holiday weekends, over the week, over, you know, in the evenings, whatever it takes to do the job. I mean, they really are superb, and he was the finest of them all.
Ms. Clerk.
Just to add, I had a call from Linda Wade, who many of you know, yesterday, and we spoke this morning. And she said she had had the wonderful relationship with Rory, and so many of our staffs, as has been mentioned, did. But she said, you know, we always thank the Fire Department and the Police Department, which we should, but we often forget that other city employees risk their lives every single day to help our neighborhoods and community. And Rory was one of those individuals who went out at every emergency, and he is one of many. And so I think that in his memory, we're not only thanking him for what he did for the city, but to remember and, you know, have prayers for all of our city employees who go out, particularly those that go out in the emergency and repairing those streets. And so I think in that vein, we want to thank all of the representatives from Public Works. It's a family there, I know, and particularly in the engineering and the rest of that Public Works family. So I just would like to add my condolences and for us to always remember that Rory represents city employees who risk their lives every day.
Other members on Rory's adjournment. Mr. Labanche.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, as Cindy and Wendy said, and as Tony and as our commissioners and our deputy city engineer, and to have people who work for other people, that's what we are, people who work for the people. Rory worked for the people. And Tony, as you described, is what the commissioner said, "I wanted to fight to save the street." And I know in my district, he's been out on issues in the past. And it's a very unique challenge because he can make decisions right there, and has to see the commissioner to get the final approval, but make decisions right there to get a street fixed because a sewer line breaks. You can't send it to city council because city council can't act that fast. He's out there making action for the people. And what a tribute to what was written about him, what is now spoken about him, a very unique individual. And I love what you said about his mother riding with him, you know, and because I'm sure he'd get 3 o'clock in the morning calls, and out they'd go somewhere in the city, and he'd find a way to get it. And then that talent of working with those contractors to make sure that it's being done at the cost that it's, that does in an emergency. So I just wanted to stand on behalf of the people of the 4th District and all my colleagues here in the Board of Public Works. Water is an amazing challenge. It's so dangerous for anybody. And as Wendy mentioned, it is the police and fire. We often come to the top of our heads. But last night, I was on the corner of Western and Beverly, and Public Works was there, and DOT was there, and somebody's there. We're going to miss Rory because I think he loved that job. I think that's the one thing about this city, that some people find the job that they love. That man loved to go out and solve a problem. And coming from Michigan, having that great value of the Midwest, he could do something, and he did it. And as you said, Tony, to fight to save that street, that's unique and special. So I just want to stand in praise of his work and let it be known loud and clear how special that he was.
Mr. Carras.
I'd just like to conclude that I think that Rory would have enjoyed this discourse, knowing that there are other people in the city who follow his example of leadership and commitment. I just want to take an opportunity to read a couple of quotes from our city engineer, our head engineer, Gary Lee Moore, who said earlier, "He couldn't be here today because he's with the family," and rightfully so. And I quote, Gary Lee Moore said, "He was a hero for us." And I think it's appropriate that we end on this note and this quote. "I remember Rory's smile and grin. He would come bouncing into the office and say, 'Boss, we've got another one.'" I'd run through the checklist of things to do, and he was always a step ahead of me. All members.
All members. Other tributes today? Mr. Labanche.
Members, someone who was able to lead this city as its superintendent of schools passed away, Harry Handler, who some of us had worked with. He passed away at 76 years old. From 1981 to 1987, he was the superintendent of Los Angeles Unified Schools. And when he became the superintendent, there was much division within the school district. He was able to calm the board and have them focus on matters of interest to the children as opposed to the politics that took place often on a school board. I want to just read this clearly. As he grew up in Los Angeles on the east side, he graduated from Fairfax High School and got his degree from UCLA, as well as his upper degrees, his doctorate in education from USC. His five goals were to improve student achievement, provide safe and orderly schools, strengthen support from the parents and the community, raise the staff morale, and restore the relationships and the district credibility between state and local, federal officials. He was effective. He was a very effective superintendent. At that time, I was very involved in my high school and the community support group there, and Harry Handler was a very effective superintendent for our students. At that time, there were only 500, and I believe 90 students. Now we're well over 700,000 in this short period of time. He also had to transform the school district in the effective of Proposition 13 and what it meant to local schools. Harry Handler- Harry Handler was truly a great superintendent. He also continued his teaching. He was teaching just recently in, at UCLA in their graduate education and information studies program. He served on the boards of the Antidefamation League and Jewish Big Brothers. He truly was an angel in the City of Angels. He's survived by his wife Kay and his daughter Lisa, and a memorial services plan for Harry Handler, one of the great superintendents of Los Angeles Unified School District.
Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Maria Urias Munoz. She's a resident of District 1 since 1950 and of Highland Park since 1956. She is the mother-in-law of Maria Teresa Munoz of the CIO's office, and the mother of Rosario Munoz, whom some of you do know. Maria Urias Munoz passed away peacefully on February 8th, 2005. She was 90 years of age. She was born in Tucson, Arizona, and was the eighth of 10 children of Antonio and Ignacio Urias. She was an outstanding student, graduated from the University of Arizona in 1937, a time when few Mexican-Americans, especially women, attended college. She taught in the elementary schools of St. John's, Arizona, and eventually married the school principal, Rosario F. Munoz, in 1940. Had been married for 64 years until Rosario's death, just a short time ago. We had the honor to adjourn on his memory. Together, they moved to Los Angeles in 1947. Maria Munoz was active in the community schools, attended by her children, was president of the PTA at Regan Avenue Elementary, as well as Nightingale Junior High. In 1956, the family moved to her Highland Park home of 49 years. All her children graduated from Franklin High School and all are professionals. When the children grew, were grown, she worked at Ivors Department Store in Highland Park and Occidental College. She was a volunteer at the Descanso Gardens for 30 years. She was also a very active member of the Sacred Nations Catholic Church for nearly half a century. She's survived by her sister, Celia Diaz, her children, Maria Rosario Wortnick, Rosario U. Munoz, Carlos U. Munoz, Alvida Gilguen, and 14 grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. A funeral mass for her was held on February 10th at Sacred Nations Catholic Church. The family has asked, and in lieu of flowers, please make a donation to the Descanso Gardens. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
A victim of our floods, Mr. Robert Wickham passed away February 21st. Robert Wickham was sleeping in his residence when the hillside gave way and broke through the wall and windows, burying him up to four feet of mud. He was trapped for approximately 45 minutes, at which time the rescue ambulance pronounced him deceased. This occurred at 2:31 at 4164 Nataoma in Woodland Hills. Five companies of firefighters, fire rescue ambulance arrived, swift water team arrived to recover Mr. Wickham. They concluded the victim was entombed beneath approximately four feet of mud and debris as it pushed through the rear of the structure. They had to utilize a thermal imaging camera to locate him and recover his body. We do not have the name of his survivors at this particular time. May Mr. Robert Wickham rest in peace.
Other final tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.[840.93]
Other final tributes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.